For the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. We need a determination of a form? Howard?
And we have six members present and one absent.
All right. Uh, any items on the agenda or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion is second. All those in favor of the motion? The people saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Recognition and awards. I don't see any here, but my pen just gave out. I could do thank you, Kathy.
It's coming up.
The official pen.
It's a James pen.
Well, it's working good. All right. I see no recognitions and awards on the agenda. Uh, community comment. Three minutes per speaker, fifteen minutes per topic. Any members of the community which would like to speak today? All right, seeing none, we will move right along to the consent agenda. I'll accept a motion at this time to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Um, roll call, please.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
Jeff Davis?
Aye.
Jason Ingrid?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
James Wolf?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And so it passes six to.
Item number six on the agenda, committee reports. Finance committee.
Okay, the minutes of the last meeting were in your packet. If you cross check those against the new business, you will see that we took action on F. Item seven F, seven G, seven H, and seven I. Those all come before you with recommendation for approval from the finance committee. We also discussed several other things, including the Jeff Selberg presented information about the financial status of the area Learning Center and just prepping us that there may be, because of a decreased current enrollment, which seems to be a blip, a temporary blip, that they may need some additional financial support in the future. But he wasn't asking for anything now, just giving us a pre proactive report. Uh, we talked about the budget calendar and we've been sort of talking about that just so we have a relatively firm handle on how this will evolve over the next few months. So next month, we should set a target budget and that should include the amount of reductions that we made. That would be the, hopefully every year is not a reduction, but we can count on that this year. So that'll happen in February. In March, we will look at the potential budget adjustments. In April, we'll approve the budget adjustments and then we'll have one more month in May just to digest the whole thing. And in June, then we would give approval to the twelve thirteen, twenty twelve thirteen adopted budget. So that's how we'll get there. And the one other, we did talk about the job description, which you had before you for approval. I thought we had actually approved that, but I guess the chairman's objections to the format sort of precluded that.
Context though.
Right. And we also heard a report on the Southeast Service Cooperative, of which we're a member, and according to their figures, we have a return of about over eighteen hundred percent on our investment, but that's sort of calculated in a favorable way. But clearly, we get more money out of our participation than we pay to be in it. So that was the meeting of the finance committee.
Any questions for James? All right, policy committee.
Uh, we met on Wednesday and just reviewed some policies that are coming up for first reading. Um, there's a few second readings on there. Most of the first reading ones were language changes from MSBA. It's a pretty quick meeting.
And then seven oh nine, we're going to wait on that one because we needed more information. Um, this is a very minor note, but finance committee, what day of the week did you meet? It says Monday the seventeenth.
They did meet Monday, didn't you?
Huh? No, yeah, that, this time it was Tuesday.
I think the seventeenth was Tuesday.
Right.
Right, right, yeah. Monday was Martin the King.
Yeah.
Thank you for catching that, Mr. Chair.
Uh, any questions for Doug on policy? Any other committee reports at this time?
Uh, just to comment too, on the next agenda, we talked about putting curriculum committee on that as a stand in report also. So we'll make sure that's included in the next.
Uh, Tom, did you want to say anything about committee?
Uh, we haven't met since last.
Okay, all right. All right.
On the curriculum committee besides Tom?
It might be just uh, just Jerry on the committee. Jerry's on policy.
No, but I mean, there must be some other, I meant, others there.
Oh, sorry.
Well, Joanne?
You're the only one that's on as far as I know.
No, he wants to know others.
Outside board members.
Other, other than board members, he's requiring.
Well, we also, um, we have one, two of them ever, retired teachers. We have, um, five, I believe, parents, college student at my school, an elderly teacher. So, um, I think that's, that the regulation is, says that we have to have two thirds of community people. So we can't have too many staff members because we, that's obligated on the parents.
All right.
Ms. Ostrom, can you tell me when the next meeting will be?
Um, it said, I didn't remember his name, so it's February, um, sorry, the second, third, January.
Could you email me, please?
Another note then, I think, for Kathy and Todd then on the dates to remember on the end of the agenda. Putting curriculum committee on there would be a standard way to operate. All right, other questions? Committee reports? All right then, moving right along. Item number seven, new business. Item number A, consider acceptance of gifts and donations. We have a few of those tonight. Um, Todd, would you like to say anything about those?
Sure, um, if I can find them though. Oops, went to far, okay. Just, yeah, just something else. The first one is from Fet, is it Fet?
Fetty.
Yeah, Fetty, sorry, Fetty Electronics, two thousand seventy five, two thousand seventy five dollars discount toward purchase of video equipment at the Fairbowl Theater. They used it to purchase cameras for the theater. Um, Fairbowl Transportation donated their time and cost for the orchestra students perform on December sixth and student council trip to Walmart to purchase Santa and Smiles gifts. So, thank you. And then South Service Co-op donated two fifty dollar Office Max gift cards that we use for office supplies in the district office. And then donorschoose.org, which is an online donation, the value of three hundred forty three dollars was given to Kristen Wilkers Jefferson Elementary, second grade classroom, and that was to purchase supplies for the reading to learn mail portions. Best donations.
As a board, I think we all express our thankfulness for local businesses who step forward to, to serve our schools. So I think we all appreciate that. In particular, I'd like to note that my daughter's in Mrs. Wilkers' class, so I'm particularly happy to see that. Um, so, uh, any comments on the gifts? I'll look for a motion then to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Um, motion, uh, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda, the enrollment update.
Good evening. You have the report in your packet and you can see that we did drop about thirteen students, twelve, thirteen, twelve students. And if you look at the detail, it's kind of sprinkled across the grade, so it isn't in any one grade, which is pretty typical. So this is not a typical Fairbowl. We generally do lose students throughout the year, so we're hoping that we can obviously hang on to them for the rest of the year. But we'll see. You can see that the average, the K twelve average excluding the ALC is still hanging right around the thirty seven hundred. So we'll be taking a lot of detailed look at enrollments when we talk about budgets and enrollments at the February sixth work session. So this is just an update of where we're at on January first.
Um, I don't know if this is obvious or if it's even easy to look at. I know the ALC enrollment, we were just saying a little earlier, is down a little bit this year from what is typical at this time. I'm wondering if there's a way to compare the numbers from past years. I, I sort of seem to remember the ALC tends to grow by this time of the year. Um, and I'm wondering how often that's a transfer from the high school to the ALC and whether or not there's a way for us to tell if that's happening to a lesser extent this year, for better or worse, whatever that means. Um, I don't know if it's easy to look at or not. Does that seem like a easy thing to do?
I've got this information for the timeframe that I've been here, so we would have it for, you know, three, three or four years.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't want to have to do a lot of work, but it might be interesting to look at the numbers to see if.
And I think that when you see the decreased numbers in the ALC, you have to remember that our overall enrollment numbers are down. So you would expect statistically that the ALC numbers would be down too.
But I think the ALC is typically around a hundred and fifty by this time of the year. Tim, do you know it?
No.
Okay, I have to look back.
I think when I first started, it was right, anywhere between a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and thirty five. But in the last year, it dropped down to, it hung closer to this hundred, hundred and ten number. So.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Any other questions on the enrollment?
Mr. Selberg was at our finance meeting and the, the explained part of it is because of the senior class being as small as what it is. It's a very kind of a trough here right now.
She's a small class, babe. Okay.
All right, seeing no other comments, we'll move along. Thank you, Kelly. Uh, moving on to item seven C, consider approval of the job description for the community education director. Tom, would you like to say anything about that?
Yes, we've been working, Nicole's done a great job of putting together a job description for the community education director. And I think we have a very good draft. I think a lot of the questions you can direct Nicole and ask her, do you have questions about the job description? The idea, I think, is to get approval from the board tonight for the job description and then we can start developing a task force to see what we want within the community ed director. And then hopefully by the end of February, I'd like to put that out and advertise for a community ed director. So that's kind of the plan right now. And so we're hoping we can get this approved today.
Questions or comments on the side?
I guess I'd be interested in hearing from Nicole on our process for developing the, the, uh, job description.
Excuse me. Um, what I typically do is I take, I, I collect the job descriptions from the big nine schools and other schools that are comparable to us, like Alexandria, because they're the closest levy wise and enrollment wise. Um, so I, I use their job descriptions and then also look and see what we currently have. And then I also looked at the city's job description for what the current position looks like. And just with some brainstorming amongst ourselves with, um, Colleen, Todd, and I, we, we put it all together and kind of made it, um, developed it to see, developed it so that it would work best for us. It, what you have is a real, a real rough draft. I think we'll have something more specific and maybe, um, more, more detailed once the committee is developed and once we, we have more input to, to see what exactly it is that we need in our community.
Any major differences from the previous job description that?
The major difference would be that it does not include any of the park and rec duties. That's the biggest difference. Everything else is pretty much the same.
Other questions?
I'd like a, just, if my understanding, this position is evolving due to the changes or upcoming changes in our agreement with the city.
Correct.
And this position will be paid for out of existing revenue. It's not a, an addition, is, or am I, am I correct in that it's paid out of
Community.
Existing income, not a, not an additional position that we'll be funding through the general fund. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, right on the notes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Well, one of my, uh, perspectives is that community ed should have a narrower focus and really teach English as a, teach English and get another pre-K preparation. But Colleen assures me that all the life enrichment, uh, act, uh, courses, uh, which probably have a small number of students pay for themselves. And so if we got rid of them, I mean, it's a financial wash. So other than having a more narrow focus in terms, which always is helpful to accomplish things, I think. But financially, we don't gain anything by having this wider range of offerings.
Other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Uh, any other comments? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Uh, item seven, where are we at? Item seven D, consider approval of appointment to community education advisory board.
I can help you with this one too. This is, we have our advisory board that'll go through June thirtieth of two thousand twelve this year, so it's still in place. And the person that the city has appointed for this position is Marcia Fortney and we're asking the board to also approve it in our agreement with our community education program.
Any questions or discussion on the side?
Can you tell us a little bit about our qualifications or how did you, how did you come to choose her?
I actually got the information from Paul Ponansky, so I know, I'm sure Paul's not.
It was recommendation from Paul.
Yeah, that was his recommendation, yeah. Yeah, but I didn't see any confirmation.
So.
Um, this is somewhat of a, of a non-secretary, but Todd, uh, does this board exist after the current, um, agreement expires?
Actually, this one does. Um, the one, the JPA board will not have this.
The JPA, okay.
So, and once that whole piece and we get the community education director on board, we'll all sit down and visit how the community advisory board is going to work.
Sure.
But.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? I'll entertain a motion to approve then.
Let's go move.
Second.
Thank you. Um, motion is, uh, made and, and seconded. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is E, consider approval of additional EBD DCD teacher and paraprofessionals at the Cannon River Education Center. Perhaps Cheryl would like to come up and help us with this item.
Good evening. I am requesting, um, a consideration of additional staff at the CREC to meet the needs of, um, some students that we have. Um, currently, uh, two of our students, um, that we are not able to meet their needs with the current staff. It requires another, uh, EBD teacher, um, and I did list it as an EBD teacher with possibly looking for someone that also has experience working with students with developmental cognitive disorders. That's the DCD. Because we have students that have, um, some more unique needs that we're not able to meet their needs with the current staff, we are asking for an additional staff member to meet the needs of these two students. As well as, uh, there are two more students in Northfield. If we had an additional teacher added, they have also, um, committed to, uh, placing their two students in our program. And when we do that with the current agreement, they would, uh, share fifty percent of the cost of the additional staff. And you have the numbers there, uh, in your handouts as far as the, the cost of that. Uh, we're also looking at, um, that in this type of classroom with these unique needs that we would need a one to one ratio of adults to students. And therefore, the addition of, uh, paraprofessionals would be needed at this time as well. You had, uh, approved the addition of one paraprofessional to meet the needs of one of the students that was, was there. We have now, um, added one more student recently within the last week that also has, um, that need as well. But with a subteacher and, and a paraprofessional right now, it's, it's meeting hit the needs of that particular student.
Cheryl, so to make sure I understand, you're saying that, uh, there's an additional student to the four that are listed here that also has a need?
Yes.
Is that right? Um, does the Northfield board need to vote act on this as well?
Um, they do not need to vote on it. Uh, we, Todd and I met with, uh, Dr. Richardson and Dr. Lewis, uh, in, at the late December to talk about the needs and, and, um, have their commitment to, uh, supporting this additional classroom. The Northfield, um, school district, they would be seeking, uh, they're actively seeking placements for those two students. Uh, and if they do not find another placement for them, they would be in the position of needing to hire a teacher as well.
But we need to act on it because we would be hiring the teachers, right?
Yes, because we, we do have two students currently that we need to meet their needs.
And they would be our staff.
And they'd be our staff.
They're our staff. This is why this board is voting on it, but they, they will need to. They're contracting for the services.
Their staff. Right, exactly. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Cheryl on the side? We talked about it at the last meeting as well?
Not this specific request, I mean this general need, right?
This general need, right. And I think at the last meeting, didn't we approve of an additional paraprofessional?
Yes, you did.
At the last meeting, so this is the.
Just one or more, more than one?
You, at, at the last meeting, you approved one.
One.
And I would be asking for the additional pending the other students being added to the program.
There's, so there's one teacher here and three paraprofessionals, the pair that we've already approved, if that's part of this, right?
Correct.
This is not in addition to that.
Right. And then we would be maxed out with, with, um, this program for this year. Uh, we do not have the space capacity to add any more students. Uh, it's a, the space that we have available is rather small and to meet these unique needs, we really could not go any further with this program at this time.
And I think another question, Cheryl, just, just so I'm clear, I, I, our options here are fairly limited, right? If we did not approve this, we would need to be placing these students in somebody else's program.
That's correct.
Which would cost us well in excess of what we're asking for here, right?
That's correct.
That's, that's my understanding. There's no choice about whether or not we serve these needs, right?
Right.
So is the net cost, what's the net cost to us? Twenty two thousand?
Exactly. For the hap, for the, our portion, that, the Fairbowl's portion, um, splitting it with the Northfield, it'd be the twenty two thousand seven hundred and fifteen.
And that's for the remainder of this year?
For the remainder of this year. That's the cost.
That's after, it's a re-embristment.
Yes.
Do we have any means of projecting needs into the next year?
Yes, and we're actually, uh, working on that right now and, uh, looking to see what the needs would be, uh, within the district as well as, uh, what the needs of Northfield would be, uh, and looking at, um, what are the, what are the options for us in, in moving forward? And, and what does that look like for next year? So that will be coming at a, at a later date.
Now, I understand you're saying that we are maxed out in terms of available space at this point. If we, I don't know if it's foreseen that we're being look, I, I understood there were some conversations about, you know, adjusting the space at Cannon Valley.
Right.
And, um, if more space becomes available, we might be taking in students from other districts beyond Northfield? Or is our agreement specifically with Northfield?
Right now, it'd be specifically with Northfield. If we did not fill those spaces with our, our students and combined with Northfield, then we could open those spots up to other districts who have also expressed some interest
All right.
in knowing where space might be available for students.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cheryl? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve at this time.
So moved.
So moved.
I hear a motion, uh, to approve in a second. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Appreciate your time.
I might as well stay here because I, those two items are mine as well.
All right, well. Welcome back, Cheryl. Uh, we're on to item seven F. Uh, consider approval of purchase of service contract with Northfield Public Schools, birth to three special education program.
Right. Uh, this contract is coming forward today because, uh, as we moved into the school year and as I, uh, learned about, uh, the different aspects of the, of the services that we provide and, uh, the contracts needed to define some of those services, I noticed that a couple of contracts were missing. Uh, this one in specific is missing because of a change in the way the funding, uh, the funding flows to the district for our birth to three services. Uh, it used to all flow to the county, uh, and, and Fairbowl Public Schools was fiscal host of that county board, which was the inter-agency early intervention committee. And at that time, uh, the, that, that board, with, under the direction of the special director for Fairbowl, um, was responsible for those funds. Now those funds flow to the region and a portion of the dollars flow directly to the, each school district instead of to the county. And so, um, with that, we had a, uh, birth to, birth to two eleven or birth to three facilitator. That was our central point of intake and also handled all the referral process, connecting families to the, the right resources. Uh, and, and that contract was held under the inter-agency early intervention committee. Now, um, because of the change to the regional system and, um, the way the, the dollars flow to the district, we are, now are holding that contract as, um, for the district for, uh, the birth to three facilitator. It's an ongoing position. Um, and, um, Northfield still has need to also share in that, uh, uh, birth to three facilitator. They're asking for, to buy those services from us, um, as we are the, um, the host of that, of that, um, contract. That's what this contract is for, is they're purchasing services from us for, for this person. So they share in the cost based on child count, uh, of the previous school year. And that's what you have before you.
Any questions for Cheryl on the side?
So this is no new expense for us?
No, it's not.
It's just more of a tracking system to make sure that we have our bases covered with contractual agreements with neighboring districts.
And this is why this is new. Now I understand why this is, thank Todd and I had a conversation. Understand why this is new.
I'm thinking a little more clearly than that.
Exactly, yeah. Excellent. Other questions for Cheryl? I'll entertain.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, um, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The next one's mine.
I was looking to make sure before I thank you for your time. All right, item. All right, item seven G on the agenda, consider approval of purchases of service contract with Nurse Strand Charter School for Special Education Services, Cheryl.
Correct. Again, this is not a new relationship or or service that we that not a new service that we're providing. This is an ongoing service that has been in agreement with Nurse Strand Charter School for quite a few years. However, for the last, I think, four or five years, there there has not been a contract in place, which is a requirement. So this just outlines the current arrangement that we've had with Nurse Strand to provide some special education services to them that they are not able to do on their own. It is defined there the number of hours that they are purchasing from us for those services. It would be occupational therapy, physical therapy, some of our autism specialist consultation time and teacher of deaf or hard of hearing. What they really are purchasing are hours to to conduct evaluations and consultation to teach to their their special education staff.
Did you want to go through the how the financing works with the charter?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Others may, but but I'm fine. Any questions for Cheryl on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now I think I can thank Cheryl for all of your efforts tonight. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, moving along to item seven H, consider approval of administer, what is that? Admin Minnesota Cooperative Purchasing Venture. Colleen?
Yes, this isn't anything new that I'm asking you to approve tonight. This is something that we have done for many, many years and this is a cooperative purchasing venture that is developed by the state of Minnesota. It was created by law many, many, many years ago. And we normally fill out just an annual application to have access to those contracts, those purchase contracts. But what they've decided to do, rather than have all the districts and the cities and the counties do that every year, it's a lot of paperwork on our end and their end. They're just creating now joint powers with each of the organizations that allows us to do this from year to year. So it's just a change in the way they're doing business to try and streamline the paperwork. There's no cost for us to have access to this and it really, what it does is that the state goes out and does a lot of the bid work for us on a lot of different things. Copiers, paper, services, adjusted vehicles, a lot of different things so that you can get some bulk pricing on those kinds of things and get some good prices.
Any questions on this item, Colleen? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven I, consider approval of Southeast ABE Consortium Operating Agreement. Colleen?
This is a new consortium and and adult basic ed, just to refresh your memories, is part of our community education program. So falls under that that director's position. Pat Weiser is our director there. And we have belonged to a consortium currently with Dodge Center in Hayfield. But what the larger consortium is attempting to do with the state's blessing, it was the state that actually came up with this, the Department of Education, is that some of the adult basic ed dollars go unspent every year and are given back to the state. And by creating this larger consortium, they are able to tap into some of that monies to be given out to the all of the ABE programs that are listed in the consortium agreement. So we were first in line to get some of that and I think Pat said it was over twenty thousand that we're getting right now and she may even end up with some more. And it's because we have so many students on a waiting list in our adult basic ed program, so we really have a lot of needs there. Hopefully going forward, we can look at how we can not have a waiting list and serve all those people who are looking for adult basic education. But by joining the larger consortium, it does give us access to additional funds.
Questions for Colleen on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Colleen. There are no items under old business, so we move on to number nine, policy review on the agenda. Nine A, consider adoption of the following policies for second reading. So we will take action on these policies tonight. Policy five fifteen, protection and privacy of public records. Policy four oh five, veterans preference. Policy two oh six, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings and data privacy considerations. So these are policies that you would have seen in previous board packets and we are acting on them tonight. Questions or comments?
On all three? Questions on any of the three?
Yes, so right now all bundled together as one action. If we'd like to separate them, we could.
No, that's fine. I just have some questions which I know should have been done before this time, but they're minor. But could for the veterans preference, could someone tell me what it means? Item two C one where it said credit, a five points shall be added to the competitive open examination rating of a non-disabled veteran who so elects. What does it mean when you insert the phrase who so elects? That's in both one, two, and three.
Who so elects to apply for the position, maybe? I'd have to go back and look at it and study it.
Well, I don't.
Do you do you understand the intent of the point system?
Yeah, that's clear enough.
Yep.
So I I don't know. I think we should know the meaning of that. Because I don't know what they're electing to do. I mean, they're obviously a candidate. And then on item F, school district policy is to use a hundred-point hiring system to enable allocation. And then it says the district, the school district may or may not use a hundred-point hiring system. So it says we are going to use one, but then it says we may or may not use one. That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
We don't we don't interview a vet and we have to use a hundred-point system to tell to evaluate why we're not interviewing the vet. So what we've chose to do, there's if you have a bunch of candidates for a position and one happens to be a vet
Mm-hmm.
and you choose not to interview that vet, then you have to create a one-hundred-point system for all of your candidates telling whomever why you did not interview that candidate, that vet. It has to be based on a hundred-point system. So what this district has chosen to do is if we have a a veteran that's applying for a job, if they are qualified, then we'll interview them. Then we don't have to use the one-hundred-point system.
That clear to everybody else?
Well, I can do some.
Well, I understand, I'm not, no, I don't have it in front of me. I I understand the system, but I don't I don't know without the language in front of me at this moment. I'm not sure whether or not it's clear in the language.
I'll have to look it up and get the the piece. If you want to wait till the next meeting, we can put over.
So yeah, so I would recommend we hold. And then they have one final one on, and I realize it should be done after the first reading, not the night where I pass the day. But rather than pass things I don't understand, which didn't come to me before now, before, not too long ago. Item I, it there's a phrase, are any person holding a strictly confidential relation to the school board or school district? I don't understand what that would be either. Who would be, what would be a strictly confidential relation to the school board?
Give me the letters you have, then I can go back and research for you, get the.
We can have this whole thing.
I can just read here, see what. I'll just clarify the whole pair, C three.
Well, then I'll forget what I asked.
Yeah, then you'll have it, yeah, it'll only take it, C.
Is that, which policy was that?
That's.
Is that the same?
That's four oh five.
Four oh five. So both of the questions were on four oh five.
All those questions were on four oh five.
Any objections to tabling four oh five for the next meeting? This is a policy we actively have in place, so we're revising it.
And it follows state guidelines, so it's just a matter of understanding.
Waiting a month won't change the practice. I think that we're in place of following these guidelines, so. To make sure the language is clear, I don't have an objection. Any other objections? All right, so we will table four oh five.
Put that in old business.
That into, we'll have something for old business next time.
Yeah. Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments on any of these policies? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve now policies two oh six and five fifteen.
So moved. Second.
So I hear a motion and a second to approve policies two oh six and five fifteen. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item nine B, consider introduction of the following policies for first reading. There are five policies in front of you. Two eleven, criminal or civil action against school district, school board member, employee, or student. Policy four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Policy four nineteen, tobacco-free environment. Policy six twenty-four, online learning options, and policy seven oh seven, transportation of public school students. These items are in front of us as a first reading tonight. So now would be a good time for questions or for comments on that.
I do have one, too. On two eleven, and I know if the policy committee, I just wanted to know on item three A, what what kind of coverage do we have as school board members? So if somebody could look that up, that would be good.
I'm sure you're covered under our errors and omissions. We have an errors and omissions.
A what?
Errors and omissions?
Oh, right. So but do you know the the financial limits of that or that? That would just be interesting to know at some point in time, not urgent.
We also have coverage to MSBA, I think, too. I don't know the coverage.
We need the details for all that, that's.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
And then my other one, question, a minor one, is on policy four nineteen, item two B. It's it sounds like to me that if you're, maybe it's your own car, but that maybe you can use a school car and if you're the only one in the car, then you can smoke in the car, which I don't think, you know, it creates a smoky smell. It's like hotel rooms. It says if more than one person is present, you can't smoke if more for some of those things, if more than one person is present. And I don't know if that's, the one person is the driver, I would assume that to be the case, but.
Yeah, where'd you find it? We I've gone through this one a hundred times too. Which in other districts, what letter B?
Letter B, right. It's prohibition extends to all and a bunch of things, if more than one person is present. So it sort of sounds like if you're the only person in the car, this doesn't apply. And I think it should.
It should, yeah. I don't think that was our intent not to.
Yeah, I agree, that's how it needs to be.
Let me let me go through it just to make sure I've got it, because I've I've read that one a lot of times too. I think the one intent for it is that, I don't think the intent is to have them within our our pieces to have it. But the intent is that if there's more than one person around you, you can't smoke. So that's the piece of it that I've got to go back and interpret it. So let me go back and read it. But you can do the first reading right now and we can get that clarification for a second, right?
And that's not, it's not only vehicles, it's it's buildings as well, right?
Yeah, so like I said, I don't think the intent is to allow people to smoke in our areas. So let me get some clarification on it. Sometimes you write these policies so complicated that they overfill. And it might be a misprint to me.
Yeah, and A actually says the whole, the same, has the same phrase, if more than one person is present.
Yeah.
And and I agree with James that to me sounds like a single person in a school district's car could smoke or
Or even if they go to a school building and they're the only person in there, they're the only.
School, you know, somebody late at night alone could smoke inside the building. I think that's not what we like.
Just so you know that we don't allow that to happen in the district, so we'll.
And our policy should reflect.
Yeah, policy should reflect it, yeah.
Excellent. Other questions or comments on any of these items?
I'd like just a little clarification on policy six twenty for the online learning options. If I'm reading this accurately, it would include both ourselves as a school district could function as an online service learning provider, am I correct?
Yep.
Or we might contract with another organization that is also licensed.
That is correct. As long as they're licensed in the state of Minnesota, that'll be correct.
It doesn't preclude us offering our own services.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments on any of these policies? Hearing none, I will suggest we move on. There is no agenda on item number eleven, either items of information. A is the student representative. Sophie, you're here with us tonight. Any ideas you'd like to share with us?
Yes, um. In student council, we are starting the March Madness. We're starting up with the fundraisers for March Madness and we're hoping to interpret a dance into the end of the week of March Madness. We're trying to do the whole spirit week and bring back Ho 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 Bingo, which we did for Christmas. But we're changing it into, we haven't quite decided what we're changing it into. And we're just trying to raise all of that money to go towards our student council fund. That's all I have.
All right, well, thank you, Sophie. All right, nine B, school board members. I so I have one item there regarding the format of the agenda. Deb and Todd and I, Deb and Todd and I, as we were discussing the agenda for tonight, talked about some changes in the format that we we might make and we'll be discussing those at length at the next work session before we bring them to a board meeting and and try to utilize them. In short, I think there's going to be a few minor changes of of format. The policy and finance committee reports will be closer to the items related to policy and and finance. Not exactly sure how we'll handle the curriculum committee, but we'll find something there as well. My suggestion was to put some timelines along this side of the agenda so we can have an estimate of how long we anticipate spending on each item before a meeting. So we can talk about that more at length. It's meant to give us a guideline for discussion, not to limit discussion at all, and so we can talk about that more. I feel like I'm missing an item. Todd or Deb, do you have a sense of what I'm missing? Oh, we were also going to talk about, Todd has mentioned a few times, putting items from the from the strategic plan of the district, putting by items in the agenda, how they relate to the strategic plan of the district. And so those are items that would also be on there. I would encourage anybody else with ideas for how we might streamline or make our agendas for these meetings better to contact myself and or think about them before our work session and we'll have a look at it. I think for that work session, Todd is going to take this agenda and and try to make those changes so that we can have this agenda side by side with what by what the new format might look like. And we can look at that and see how we feel and make a decision about how we want to move our meetings along in the future. An item for you to be thinking about. And we'll discuss more at the work session before before we enact anything. Other items of information for the board from other board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
It is my Uh, it is my understanding that we're going to hear from our administration. Reactions to some of the proposed changes, particularly in vision one of student achievement.
Yes.
Is the process, am I correct in thinking that that may, that that would occur at our next work session?
Well, we talked about that and I think I got kind of mixed reviews, how you wanna do that, the last time we went through the principals, we had them all here in one spot. You know, it was kind of lengthy, so I didn't know if we wanted to break them up for, uh, or not. We're intending on having the three elementary principals come to the February meeting. To present their goals and objectives based on the new strategic plan, and then the high school and middle school, um, principals coming up at the. March work session, and then the ALC and the CRC administrators coming to the April meeting, so you don't have them all in one shot. Um, I just thought the last time we did that, I got awfully long, that's the only reason why I split them up like that.
No, and I, I think if I'm understanding what you're, you're saying, and I agree with that completely, but my concern is. That if we're going to get feedback on those proposed changes in a timely way. That we get that in such a timeframe as to allow us to, uh, consider tho- that feedback. And then take whatever steps are necessary to make that an official, you know, make our vision statement. The official vision statement, so that we can count on that statement being the basis of. Budget recommendations and decisions and, and strategic planning for next year, all those things, but until that statement becomes. The official vision of the district, it just seems to be a discussion point. And I want it, I'm concerned that we get it, whatever final form it would take. In place in time to impact these upcoming budget discussions and particularly planning for, curricular planning for. Uh, the fall.
Yeah, I wish I could insert two new months between now and next June. It's a, it's a timing issue between the budget process with the finance committee and, and the curriculum process with a lot of those visions and those pieces at that. You know, we're trying to kind of meet in the middle, I can't remember when the final, what do we want the final budget reductions to be made, do you remember that timeline, Colleen? So it is all a matter of timing.
I, I think you're going to not be able to do that for the twelve thirteen school year, you might wanna look forward to the thirteen fourteen. We have to have budget reductions done, you have to approve budget reductions by April sixteen, and that's about a two-month process. So at the February work session, we're going to be going over all of the enrollment information, the updated budget for this year, the budget assumptions for next year. And then giving you some projections that are going to identify what, um, cuts we're going to make, have to make, level of cuts in a dollar amount. And at that work session, we're going to ask you to identify that first target amount, because it takes about a month for the administrators. To go back to their buildings and create that list of reductions that you're going to have to see then in March, and then you'll have about six weeks to mull that over. Before we ask you to approve it in April, so all of this strategic discussion really needed to happen. Prior to January in order for it to impact the budget.
I think though that the vision themselves, we're just, I'm talking mainly about goals based on the vision that you guys have already created. So I, I really think the vision itself is pretty solid. So you, you actually have that part of the vision and the strategy that's in there, and that'll be presented at, at that February work session. I think maybe we're talking two different things. The.
I hope so.
Yeah, the piece I'm talking about are the goals and the strategies that the principals have to do by next year, based on the vision that you guys created in January. And then I took it and then revamped it and you looked at it at last work session, then I'm gonna give it to you again at the February work session, basically for your final stamp of approval. So you.
So the, the dis- the, our work session discussions over the last several months that have been looked at. The student, description of student achievement outcomes and, and strategies to meet them.
Yep.
Will be the document that has informed our su- our, our, uh, administrators as they have planned.
Yep, that's what I'm using, yep.
Well, that, that is my concern, I didn't. You scared me for a moment.
I wouldn't have the whole thing finished though until probably April, but the vision that you guys, the directions that you guys have established, the board has established. Unless you wanna change the visions that we've gone through already, are already established.
Yep.
No, I think we've had some very good discussions over the last several months, my concern was that any action that the board needed to take. To make that, those strategic statements.
Yep.
The, the policy of this district, I wanna make sure that we had those taken care of, so that. That philosophy, that approach, those, those concepts of what constitute a successful district and student achievement. Are the ones that are truly informing any adjustments that we're gonna have to make, program-wise, curriculum-wise, position-wise, all those things.
In fact, I would have to, if we, if, if the board decided to change some of the vision that you've already put out there, I'd have to go back to my principals and tell them, oh, you gotta start over. Cause they're already in process of making their goals and their visas and that movie, so.
I don't think the board has officially adopted that strategic plan.
Yeah, they probably have not.
Do that at the next meeting, I think informally I'm fine with if that's the doc, we talked about it informally, I think it's fine, that's the document the principals are using. We probably should ratify that in some sense.
Yeah, I don't think we have actually.
Right, so, so perhaps at the next board meeting, that should be on the agenda.
And I'm not sure which form it would take, but what I was asking, my original question this evening was about, are we going to get? Any kind of. Feedback from building-level administrators, uh, in regards to. The impact of this reworded vision, not, not that the vision is all that different, but. The expanded definitions of student achievement going beyond the test results that would seem to be our sole. Outcome in the past.
Yes.
Are they going, are they simply gonna react to what we've done, are they going, I mean, and act on what we've done, or are they gonna give us feedback before that becomes? A final, as I think Jason just alluded to.
Well, the, as far as the budget cuts go, I think that they would be part of that whole process as you go through the reductions. Based on the, the vision, so as the principals come to those work sessions or those meetings, you would have time to ask them questions and get their feedback. For what those, those pieces are. Their meeting, whatever the process is that you did last year, it was a really good process, and I'm not sure how the internal pieces work. I'll use the, the new card again, but it really worked quite well last year and how the discussion went. When I go around and I talk to the administrator in each of the buildings, it was pretty clear on what they, their task was. I think the task force this year, and correct me if I'm wrong, was for you to establish a vision on, vision number one in particular for, for operating for curriculum. And then for the principals to come back, consider what they have, make the goals and objectives, and then if there happens to be a, um. A discussion about an item that needs to be reduced or cut, then you would have the debate at that time. There's gonna be debate regardless of.
Oh, sure.
Where you're gonna cut, it's just a matter of hoping that they'll be able to follow that vision as closely as it possibly can. But then if there's, if you, if you're going to make the cut, the ramifications that the discussion will be with the principals is, well, if you make that cut. I'm not gonna be able to achieve that goal, that will be the response. So that's, that's the discussion you're gonna have as we go through this, it's kind of a dynamic process as we go through it, but you have established the groundwork for it.
Right, so that's what I think our current strategic plan is, is the groundwork for this next level discussion. I would see that we wouldn't approve it until we approved the budget in June, that the two go hand in hand, and then we finalize the strategic plan. With the input and, and actual goals, you know, actions, action plans, tactics, whatever you prefer to call them. Built in, and it's one comprehensive document, I mean, that, we may have some tweaking to do based on what the feedback they give us, so. I think we're comfortable with what it is, but I, I wouldn't wanna prove it as this is the document, or we wanna prove it as this is. Where it is at that present time, but I, I don't see the need to.
What's the board think of that idea suggested by James, to, to wait and approve them at the same time, to give ourselves some flexibility to.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with James, I think that makes a lot of sense to see what, see what we end up cutting and. Respond to it with the whole piece together.
Yeah, they, they go hand in hand like he said, so it would make more sense to do it at the same time.
Richard, thoughts on that?
Well, I thought we were gonna have a strategic plan before we talk about budget cuts, 'cause what, what do we follow? What plan do we follow? Tell everybody this is it, then, then we make the cuts accordingly, or if it doesn't meet, then we have to change our plan again, so. I think that Tom, I think that's what Tom was saying, is that correct, Tom?
Yes, as I understand.
What, what, what comes first, the chicken or the egg type of thing?
To me, if we haven't defined what we consider a well-educated Faribault graduate to be able to do in those kinds of discussions. We haven't made that definition, whether we are able to accomplish every one of those goals. I think is, is open for debate, whether we've been accomplishing all of those goals is open for debate. And unless we have that definition as our definition of a quality education, I don't know how we can. Thoughtfully go forward and make decisions about cuts, if the cuts are all, if the cuts are gonna determine our vision. I, I think we've got the cart leading the horse, I think our vision has to determine the cuts. And I don't think we're being straightforward with the public unless we have the, the, the description of a quality education. Quality student achievement, down in black and white, these are the goals we wanna meet. Now, if we fall short on those goals for, in any way, shape, or form, that's not a good thing, but at least it is the honest truth to our community. That as much as we would like to, as much as we consider this a valuable thing, experience, area of knowledge, area of achievement. Area of effort, area of performance, any sort of thing, we simply don't have the resources to meet all those goals. And the community can like that, dislike it, vote for a larger override at some point or not, but unless we have. The vision ought to be the vision, and that not dependent on, um. Political or. Other decisions in this budget reduction process. The vision ought to be the vision.
Tom, I think we're going a little bit beyond items of information here, and I think, but I do think this is an important discussion. Um, whether or not we approve this, uh, this plan, uh, we have a work session before the next, uh, meeting. And I think it would be appropriate for us to carry on a longer discussion so we don't feel confined at this moment to make that decision. Um, so I'm gonna ask the, beg the indulgence of carrying this discussion forward to the, uh, to the next work session to make a decision about, uh.
Can I just respond here in the name of.
Sure.
Political DB, I don't think we're that far apart, I think we clearly laid out our vision, I'm not looking for wholesale change, wiping major sections out. I'm just saying, I think before we approve it, we oughta hear from the constituents, the stakeholders, whatever. And if they need clarification or whatever, we have the opportunity to do that without saying, oh no, we've approved this, this is it. Maybe we can do it that way too, I don't care, but I'm not talking to say, well, this is just a draft, you know, uh, I mean, this is what we want. But I think to prove it before we've heard from the people who have to implement it is, I don't know, um.
Well, that was my, my original question, whether we were gonna get that kind of feedback in the next few weeks. So that we take what I wouldn't like to see as a definitive vote, and that's, so we establish it. But I, I didn't wanna make that vote without the opportunity to hear from those stakeholders that are gonna be impacted by it.
So I think we aren't far apart in our approaches here, personally, I don't think we are.
Alright. Any other items of information from the board members?
Were you trying to be done by seven thirty or something?
Nope, not at all.
You sheriff in town?
Thank you, Tom, for blowing my kids to the record, no, not at all, not at all. It's an important item for us to think about, so thank you, Tom. Alright, uh, then we'll move on to superintendent, any other sort of information?
Thank you, and I, I do appreciate the discussion, uh, about those vision and goals, just so you know, my interpretation. Even though it hasn't formally passed, those are the visions that our staff is using as we move forward. So just keep that in mind when you're, when you're flowing through this discussion, whether you've approved it or not, those are the ones we're using, okay? The update I gave you was the superintendent's expectations that you had given me, I gave you a, a brief report earlier this year. And I just wanted to give you an update on where I am, it kinda gives you an idea of what I've been doing, and the, I've broken the visions down. To what they were originally, they've changed a little bit, but I believe the visions were for this year, so. Use the visions that you created last year for this year, so don't use the new ones, alright? So, um, the visions, vision one, just some minor initiatives that I've been doing, and, and, um. You wanted to kind of keep up to date on those ideas, we've gotten some clarity about E-Rate, that's kind of my goal, how the system works here. We're investigating some tech equity aid, which.
What is E-Rate, I'm sorry?
E, I'm sorry, E-Rate is, um, a, a federal program that we can access. That reimburses us for a lot of technology costs, like T-one lines and fiber optics and things like that, so we get reimbursement from the feds for some of those programs. Tech Equity Aid is another reimbursement program that we haven't tapped into, and Colleen and Maria and I have been working on that. Trying to see if we can tap some more resources to offset more of our technology cost, um, and there'll be more coming. That could, that could gain us another ten, twelve thousand dollars for the school district, uh, money that we didn't have before. Um, in online learning, I continue to explore some of this area, I've talked to Maria, and, um, we've talked to. At our last policy committee meeting, we, we've talked about some of the online learning ideas that our current staff has, and, um. And I've talked to Maria about looking and researching some of those other areas that offer some online programs, so we have a good idea of what's out there for online learning. Some of the major initiatives, um, the ELL community initiative, I mean, working with the. With a small Somali, Somali community group, particularly with Asher, and then also we've invited a couple of other people. Um, to be in on those meetings and they've done very well, we're really kind of at a discussion phase right now. Uh, the mayor has asked to, asked me to be part of his task force to, to take a look at some of our ELL, ELLs, English learner. Language, English language learners, and, uh, try to see if we can come up with some solutions for our population. They are an asset, and I think people have to understand that, one of the things that you have to take a look at is even our school population with our ELL students. Is, uh, really financially helped us out tremendously, so the school district and the businesses. And the city are all trying to figure out a way to help this community out.
Like a newcomers program.
Yes, we've talked about that, yeah. Community education is a big transition, and we're doing that right now, um, another one that's, uh, I, I didn't list it, but I'm also looking at the evaluation piece. I know that's high on your agenda, we've got some software that I'm working with, uh, both Troy Priggy and I have worked with the software company to try to. Work, um, develop, uh, Charlotte Danielson software for teacher evaluations, and then the more recently. Principal evaluation system that was adopted by the state of Minnesota, so that's, we're gonna try to translate that into a software. And actually Troy and I are demoing that to all the southeast Minnesota superintendents in February, so that should be a nice program for us to do. Vision two, um, mainly based on a lot of the finance director's initiative, she's done a great job, I don't wanna rock the boat too much. I'll go in there and ask some questions, but I don't wanna. Um, I'm representing the Massar Group as a legislative chair for the state of Minnesota, and, um, meeting with. Uh, Representative Garoppolo tomorrow, I met with Sonia Erickson last week, so those are all key education legislatures of the state. And I will be meeting with them. And then also communicating through the public through various media of our financial situations, I had a nice visit with our local radio station. Uh, last Friday?
Is it Friday?
That's Friday, yep, and, um, I've actually also asked, although not a lot of financial information, I've asked. Um, Cheryl to write an article for the Faribault Daily News for this month, so that was submitted today. Vision three, design and implement short and long-term facilities, and we're still working on that, we're getting pretty close, we should have something for you, probably, do you think, February? Or probably March?
Hopefully February.
February, February Finance Committee. Okay. Vision four, we continue to develop our evaluation process and the good work that Nicole has done, she did a tremendous job on the community ed. Program and getting that ready to go, um, I think we've got a nice direction on where we're supposed to be heading for this. Uh, oh, there's the software evaluation tool that we're using, it was in there somewhere. Um, vision five, just keep on being visible in the school district and writing. Vision five, just keep on being visible in the school district and writing articles, I've got an article ready to go for the bulletin. Working well, again, it's important that we work close with the city with this community education transition process, which I think is going very well. And, um, also be visible within the community and speak at events and participate and try to get out where I can. So that's kind of what I've been doing for my goals, for the goals you set for me.
Doc, can you say a little more about your role as chair of, uh, the, uh, state legislative chair for Massaw?
Yep, it's, the superintendent has four component groups, and the legislative compo- is one component group where we go up and we visit with, I'm not the, the actual lobbyist, we have a lobbyist for Massaw, and then we also have an executive director for our superintendent's organization. So, um, when we have meetings up at the office for the s- state superintendents, and I basically chair the meetings like Jason's doing here, and then we get a good discussion and go through the whole process, and then we go up and we meet with the legislators to talk about our, our platform.
So in the month, next couple of months, a few months ahead, there should be kind of some insights you'd have for us and what's happening in the legislature?
Yeah, yeah, we have some insights, but I don't know how far our insights will go, but yeah, we'll have a lot of information. By the way, is there a legislative liaison with this group? Do we have a legislative liaison? We don't, okay. Jerry would probably be the closest, because he's on the C committee, I think, isn't he?
Mm-hmm.
So he'd be the first, all right, okay.
But maybe we can hear a little bit about it at, uh, work sessions or some of what's happening.
Yep, give you some updates.
Yeah.
Yep, they're gonna start right now, so should be interesting. You're right, yeah, some updates, I want to sessions for this.
Also, I think, uh, last meeting, we complimented the data news and their coverage for us, and I think, uh, we should also probably to thank KDHL for the, for the, uh, coverage they give us, not only for sporting events, but for things like A of Minnesota where, uh, we have a chance to voice some of what's going on in the school district.
Definitely.
Compliments.
I'm going for a long time, so I enjoy visiting with him. He watched our state girls' basketball team go all the way, win the state championship with us, that's good.
Ours?
Cannonball, uh, theirs, sorry, theirs. I haven't slept up at all yet this year, that's my first one, so theirs are soon to be.
All right, any other items of information?
Oh, you were speaking as a parent.
That's right, yeah, my daughter did play for that team, that's right, I was.
There you are, you're forgiven now, good save.
Thank you, you're forgiven. Thank you.
Who is the task force on superintendent evaluation?
Uh, Jerry, myself, and Tom.
Okay.
All right, dates to remember, uh, February sixth, five thirty, work session in the district office. February thirteenth, finance committee, uh, meeting, uh, in the district office, seven thirty in the morning. February thirteenth, six P M, policy meeting in the district office. February twenty seventh, six thirty, um, regular board meeting here in City Hall. When was that curriculum committee, anybody have that handy?
We're gonna have to look it up and email that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, we need to, uh, somebody has to remind me how to do this, we need to adjourn, no, we need to close the session, so.
Need a motion and a second to close the session.
Motion and a second to close the session, so I'll entertain such a motion at this point.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, we'll take a three or four minute recess here and, uh, come back and close session.
Which used to be five minutes.